Right, I am going to call the meeting to order. Welcome everyone to our Way Sports City Council Meeting. It is Thursday, June 20th, 23rd floor. Please rise for the invocation followed by the blank salute and roll call. Lord, guidance as we gather here today grant us the clarity of thought and purity of intention. Their decisions reflect compassion and foresight serving not just for today but for generations to come. Bless us with discernment to navigate complex issues and the courage to choose what's right over what's easy. Let our effort be beacon of hope and progress for the community. Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in heaven. All right, item three approval of city council meeting minutes from June 6th, 2024. We're wishing the second. Motion and second, any comments, questions on the minutes? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank will be motion item three.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Palenti.
Yeah.
Mrs. Maillan.
Yeah.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, item passes five zero. Item four, leading the jersey floor, we've had one request tonight on Mr. Rob Cooley. So, Rob, you're welcome to come up. Just state your name, address, in which height upon the agenda you will be addressing and you have about three minutes to do so.
Welcome, sir. Good evening. Thank you, appreciate it. Thank you for the council for having us tonight. My name is Rob Cooley. I live in Tulsa, but I was a sport in college. And I'm here on behalf of the cycling community. With us tonight, we have members of the bike helmet composite, not by the racing team, much use, young racers. And I'm going to be talking about, maybe. But said, yes, about the pump track. This is a project that we have been working on. I've been collaborating with for quite a while. And Hannah provided, I have some extra time to like, look at it. Basically, this talks about a pump track and the mountain skills park is basically a playground if you will, for people with ride bikes. But it allows skill building, it allows teamwork, it allows community building and a whole variety of community benefits. And I've listened to them saying, and then. As a park feature, it has a lot of community benefits as well, increased property values, tourism, youth engagement, so on. I just want to thank you for the support and the opportunity to progress with this project and. I just, I really appreciate the opportunity to explore implementing this new type of recreational now for tourism developed in our community. I think it has the potential to bring a lot of growth, a lot of revenue to it and as I said. Give you another reason to come to this. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cooley.
We will move, we're going to jump around for the first couple items here. We'll move down to item 11. Mrs. Frank.
Resolution to approve a substantial amendment to the fiscal year 2019 annual action plans and community development of lock grant and home investment partnership programs.
Is there a motion in a second?
Move.
Motion in a second. Skip, good evening, sir, and welcome. Board is yours.
Good evening, President Yoder, members of council. We bring to you this evening. The substantial amendment resolution for the CV funds that had been allocated to the splash pad. That we are now reallocating to the new building park improvement project. We talked about this. A handful of times over the last couple of months, and we've now conducted the public hearings. We've conducted all the prerequisites. Will allow us to make this change and be submitted to housing and urban development for their approval. Once that is completed. And we can then go forward with the environmental evaluation and the design of this park. As we are working through this, it's a $480,000 reallocation of money. From the splash pad to the new variant park improvements, those improvements to include two tackle ball courts, they've all soccer multi-purpose field. Restrooms, walking trails, handicap parking and, and some sidewalk improvements for accessibility. All those features yet to be determined. Those are the ideas that are kind of on the wish list and all depend on what we can fit and if we have enough money to do them all. With that, Jamie Schrader, the prosecutor, who has been spearheading this is on Zoom, and I are here to answer any of your questions.
Thank you, Skip. My name is Mrs. Mealdon.
This was for due time, but I think there were actually. Sort of view the rationale behind this.
Questions or comments? Mr. Allison.
Yeah, I hadn't thought about it for a few days, but. How are we going to incorporate the community around the new variant park, these changes, what's going to be put there?
Well, we've been having some discussions, myself and Sean and Mayor. I've met with some of the members of the community. As a matter of fact, I've got a document that they kind of put together, which include the elements that we talked about, how they thought they might fit into the area. And so it's been an ongoing discussion, more discussions to, to transpire once we get more into the design of this, of this. These elements right now, we're, we're, we're just hypotheticals. The reallocation of the funds will allow us to retain a consultant to go in and design these so that we can actually go back to the community and explain what's going to happen. If they're in, make whatever adjustments are necessary.
Thanks. It's wonderful. Thanks, Skip. Any other comments or questions? Hearing seen none, Mrs. Frank will be motion for item 11.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah.
Mr. Palenti.
Yes.
Mrs. Maillan.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yeah.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes five zero. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let's jump up to item seven, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing execution of agreement between city and Way Sports and fellow design studios Pump Truck.
Is there a motion second? So move. Second, your senator. Good evening, sir.
Yes, good evening, President Yoder, members of council administration. What you have before you is a resolution. Authorizing execution of agreement between the city and fellow design studio slash Pump Trucks USA. As was sort of alluded to earlier by Dr. Cooley. This is for a pump track skate park in Shaw Park. Pillar slash Pump Tracks has an extensive resume, somewhere around 700 courses throughout the world, actually. So they come highly recommended. And we're very fortunate to have them here. There was some discussion in public works on Tuesday. One of those items, I think councilman Chad and councilman Palenti both had asked about insurance. So we did check on that. It's extremely nominal. I checked with, had a finance check with our insurance carrier and be. They said if you want to put a budget number in, it's about a thousand dollars and that's on the high end. It would probably be less than that. So very, very nominal. Costs to on the insurance side. Other than that, it was actually quite a good discussion. I thought of public voice and it was viewed in public works with councilman Chad.
This is kind of the worst.
Yes, we did have a further discussion and also the members from the company. First of all, the business being done with friends and also with funding from the county with the $2750,000.
Yeah, I was gonna, I was bringing that. I meant to mention that. I thank you for the line. $250,000 in county. The likely county commission to show that's pretty much. I appreciate that as well. Thank you.
Which is, you know, this is when you look at the, the resume of this company has given them to look at and study. I mean, first of all, people have involved and they have some pretty well-known people. And like I said, they haven't solved the world ones, which, which they've done. Some of the questions that we asked, we wanted to hold up since we have climate that changes from hot to snow, sleet and everything else. And they gave an explanation of there's alternatives which you can use with a mechanic, the cat or cement. They don't have advised for dirt because that's harder to maintain. The mechanic is, is weapon, but doesn't, but doesn't hold up as well. Cement is really what they think is the better, but it's possible to do that. One of the things that I liked that they said is they really want to meet with the public for, to get the ideas from the public, what they're, they're wanting to need. And then come up with a plan, but what, what they would think, what we would need in our city for this. I asked how long it took to construct it, but there's a process, the meetings, the design process. So this won't be long till probably maybe late next year. So, you know, but I'm excited that they, they want to work with the community to find out their wants and needs. One question that I came up with, and I think things could attach to this, but this is not only used for the bikers. But they said, don't be rattled because a lot of the skateboarders are going to fall there. And which is fine, they said, yeah, there's no, you cannot stop people from using this. So there might be that with skateboarders unless, like they showed us one of them, one part that they just almost finished. But they had one area that was strictly cement and one was the mechanic, which also gave it, one could be used strictly for bikes and the other for skateboarders. We can't afford that. Okay, to do that, we just can't. But it's the people that are willing, that are going to have that. And we asked, how long does this last? And they say, they still have some, some of their, their bike tracks that are up, were built in the nineties and they're still going strong with very little problem. The asphalt, they just started using asphalt five to seven years ago. So it's not a track where we're going to ask for. So it's, you know, it's, it's one of those things that they're learning. And they, as they said, and I think we all realize is that the longer things go on, the better some of the equipment. And that can be done with, with projects like this. So other than that, you know, I just felt that this was a good conversation. And, you know, my statement was that needing to get the kids outside. And away from their devices, I think is great. We are seeing them not take, but a lot of bicycles in town, which, you know, I don't, you know, haven't seen that many in several years. And I'm seeing a lot of kids outside at this point and adults, you know, I think are also getting more and more. So. I think it's a good project. And I like, like I said, the way the company wants to be involved with the community. Thanks.
Not particularly, on the, hit pretty much every point, you know, we brought up. It is exciting, the idea and concept. Like, like Bonnie said, the mixed use of material that we're going to be looking at using, so kind of weigh that factor out. And as I will say, I did specifically mention about rain gardens and, and, and the plant in the dead areas in between the tracks we can definitely. You know, and a lot of the questions that I did have, we can't really touch on this yet until he gets here, until Brad gets here and the site, does a site review and then we really go, hey, what do we want? See how that, see how that works out. No, again, Bonnie said, depending on the use of materials, the materials that we choose. Yeah, asphalt's cheaper than concrete, doesn't have a lot, all you know. Where do we find that balance? It's going to be exciting. You won't see me up. My huffy is in the garage.
Any other misfeeling?
So just a quick question, can you, because I wasn't in the committee meeting, can you tell me about that funding, sort of something again a little bit?
So we got five thousand P C N R, which is fifty fifty, and then two fifty from the county.
Okay, so seven fifty total. Kelly, thanks, but that will be enough, I think.
Oh, yeah. They showed example on Tuesday, actually, there was a promise, I think, identical to that funding amount. It was in Tucson, I believe.
It was a mixed use between asphalt and concrete, bike and state board, and it was approximately thirty thousand square, twenty thousand square feet would be a big part. And then it came in just over 750,000.
Okay.
It was, it was good amount.
Okay, and that was good there. I mean, that, I'm delighted that the same firm had nudged it to be turned down to construction administration, because that will.
They do construction as well.
I mean, they did their, the big works happening today. Construction.
Oh, the administration, yes, yes, the administration, yes.
Oh, they do construction.
They do construction.
Okay, I think that one also we find, no, I just, I. I feel as though sometimes we've lost, we're mentioning our project, well, one company that has been designed, but it's not also good age to the process in the construction administration. Also, the fact that the institution has contract means that when we okay this today, if we okay this today, that everything, that, that, that it will happen. Which is just exciting because sometimes, you know, that, that.
Hopefully, it's within budget.
Yeah. Hopefully, within budget, right. And that's the other advantage that I already seen from the manager obviously is that they have a budget, the whole approval and. If that tracks the entire thing, so that we don't wind up in a process with the construction that's about to be discussed. So I think that, that part is, is super exciting. And the, you know, the firm, they're, to be exceptionally qualified. Did we, so we did put out a request for the funds? Yeah, and how many was involved?
For.
This was by far.
Yeah, no, I'm not.
I mean, nothing, this is sort of a specialty there. This is squarely.
Yeah, no, I think the fair submission was, I just wanted, it's reassuring when you get a bunch of. Yeah, no, I, I think the fair submission was, I just wanted, it's reassuring when you get a bunch of different projects, so. Um, so, yeah, I think that was, I, I would certainly say that unless there's some. Uh, advantage to being by asphalt, if we can do, like, give the repairs to it in-house. I mean, I don't get off, you know, something, they would tell, teach our, keep that works, um, but otherwise, I'm, we should probably. Um, I, we, we tend to have a tough time coming up with, with money for upkeep, so I think. Need that, that we can go with something that if it require a lot of maintenance, you know, we won't bet on it. Thank you.
Sir Allison.
You know, um, maintenance, they stress maintenance is the big. Demand that, that we're gonna have to make, so.
So, what kind of maintenance?
Um, well, for instance, um, the asphalt. Can get cracked over a period of time, heat, freezing, that, just like in city streets, so. Um, to keep those repairs, um, pretty quickly, keep, keep them repaired and in good working order. Um, so, I really, it's happy to take that. Yeah. I mean, yeah, he stressed, actually on Tuesday, that we onsite with administrators now, that we, that we, Phil, Scott, and Jim, Jim should make. Be talking about that.
But I, I guess what I'm asking is, are there big dollar figure maintenance plans, like mission plan in five years, can do something that we have to pay someone to do a maintenance?
He didn't mention anything to that.
I mean, I, I guess what I'm asking, it shouldn't be budgeting.
Yeah. I think, I think.
Anyway, something, clearly something we should bear in mind.
Yeah.
If we're going to, I mean, something like this becomes a serious liability if you don't maintain it, so. Right, exactly, it, it, it was really the one that should happen, you know. I think we need to make sure that we set aside money to do that.
Yeah. Maybe there's not heavy duty traffic and, and then of city streets, cars and trucks and such. But, um. Again, I think it's more the elements than anything. That, that, that's a big one, um. And just to comment, I, I really think with everything we've done, all of the city parks, and are continuing to do. And are going to do in the Mary park as well, um, I, I think this really fits into the scheme of, of everything else we've done. Um, kind of like, you know. This would be like the crowning thing on top of everything we've done so far. So, um, and Mayor Sauter, we started talking about this a while ago, what. The first time we went to Shaw Park, that was, must have been early or mid twenty twenty.
That was probably twenty twenty or twenty twenty-one, yeah, it's been quite a while, you know, we met out there.
Yeah.
I didn't know what a pump track was at that point.
Right, yeah.
And, uh, now I do.
Oh, so much, yeah.
Yeah, so, yeah.
But it's, that was just the, the vision, you know. Thought at that point, but it's nice to see it, it gone this kind of shape and form.
I mean, I think, within the Williamsport, and in some ways, we're using preparation for three years now, which is another position. Um, is, we have a lot of, we have a lot of things for little kids to do, we have a lot of playgrounds, um, a lot of organized sporting activities. That's the number of the teams to pitch, um, but, uh, this builds a, a, a different niche, right? I mean, you can do it as part of a team, but you can also do it as a, and, and it is, it is like a playground, but it's like. A playground for, for, for a kid who's older and much bigger, that, that's the need that we haven't made in that yet, and it's a need. We need to keep our, you know, keep kids, they need, they need to be outside and, and so hopefully this will help that, that. I guess the name is torn, maybe about.
Probably talked about as well, um. When I had earlier, uh, the, you know, pedestrian biking friendly streets and things, and maybe, you know, don't. Do this project, we'll do that as well, maybe connect, examine same, the west end to the east end. Um, like we have a plan, it was a number of years ago, uh, some.
Bike, uh, you know, we, we have, um, um, Dublin County. A series of bike routes for the city, and I can't go around, not necessary, they are. Um, because we have so much unsafe cycling happening in the city, and so much unsafe driving happening in the city. And two things are gonna collide, and we know that's why it's on which, and so we, we need to move on that. And then we also need to move on figuring out what's going on with all the. Bike, that are bikes. I think they go by a bunch of different names, but the, of the small e-bikes that, right, have different levels of power and are going along with the speed. Yeah, um, I mean, that's a separate conversation, but I have, I think the more that we can do to protect cycle is, and especially your cycle is. Um, and, and, uh, and people on your bikes, uh, from, from under the traffic that are operating. And of course, I'm assuming this will dovetail with recreation.
Yes, but it's handy to us, there's a lot of, and this will be helpful, all the way around to my life. Here you want electric minutes, which I think, you know, um, really a challenge and also. They, more people will get involved when they see how much fun it is right now, and, um. You know, everything that you have on there, I think we've all, we've discussed with this paper and, um. And I like what you said, increase the property value and also toward, toward and local spending. What I understand, when you came to speak before, there are a lot of clubs. From what I understand, that will come and participate with this, so therefore, you are bringing more people into our city. So, and, and Shaw Park, I think is the, the best place for this to be, I really do, because there's so much vacant there. So I think this is gonna be amazing, but really appreciated what she handed up, I think this is good.
Any comments or questions? Kind of finding back on what Mrs. Cash was saying, um. So, events, maybe trying to draw people into this specifically. Do we have any kind of idea how the neighborhood is gonna feel about that potentially in terms of maybe traffic, that kind of stuff? Uh, and I don't know what the scale that would look like, but I mean, you know, on what, compared to maybe a couple other parks. This is much more in a pretty tight residential area, so have we, I just, have we taken that into kind of consideration?
Well, I think here, it's on, begin the design, but Brad talked about that Tuesday, that there will be a number of neighborhood meetings. Give everybody involved in what's happening, so.
Um, you, you had done some initial data collection in the neighborhood as well, I believe.
Well, we put out some stuff on social media, it was extremely, yeah, I mean. Arguably the most common, like, post that we put out, you'd say, so, they're really.
So it was just social media?
Well, then we did the art of study as well, which point to publicly.
So, can you resend me the art of studying, um, and then when we, when we get into this, I would. We really need to engage the residents there, and this is a great idea, I just, I think I told you this privately, Eric. I, I had some, some mixed feedback on this from residents there, and. I, I don't think they truly understand what this is for, so, what they do, um, you know, that kind of changes, but, you know, with. We should, we should do our diligence in, in the neighborhood specifically, and I think we will, let's just make sure we do that.
Definitely will.
Any other comments or questions? Here you can see none, Mrs. Frank on item seven, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Ms. Meon.
Yeah.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yogan.
Yes, motion passes five zero, let's jump down to item nine, Derek, if you want to tag out, we'll knock all yours out, if that's okay, sorry. I think, I think, uh, I, is. Who do you have from the audit firm?
Uh, I can.
Is she? Perfect, uh, we'll jump to item nine, the lockout.
Resolution to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty five reports.
Is there a motion in the second, someone?
Second.
Motion in the second, Mayor Sauter.
Yes, good evening again, Members of Council Administration. I would give out a four years resolution to accept the fiscal year twenty twenty audit reports. Um, as you know, they're on the top of the act or out, they've been working through these, they've done twenty nineteen, nine twenty twenty. Um, and then twenty one, twenty two, we should follow that too long after this one. So we talked about that a little bit on Tuesday, um, sort of getting traction, making good traction now. Um, so we're hopeful that, you know, next year we should get back on track in more time, so, um, this was reviewed in the finals.
Thank you, Mayor Sauter, number six, feeling fine.
Um, this was renewed in the final, and, um, uh, and of course, added on it is a, 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 not a. Like, you should change the numbers. Uh, I think the major, um, for most of us, this is a little bit back in the industry, because of course we are a separate. The audits, uh, first thing to note, of course, is, um, and I'm sure that Ken will some of the residents, but that. Um, I mean, she is, is no longer included in, you know, audits. Um, however, one is included in the audits, um, beginning in twenty twenty two, that. So, uh.
That he's not included in this, they were in.
I think we go down to the T on twenty twenty, twenty nineteen, twenty twenty two. Um, because there was a name on the file fail.
Yeah, but they were still an entity and that.
They're not, they're not included, we can reach out, but we, they were stripped out.
Also, this is causing issue.
Um, to the best of my knowledge, I, I think. What we all sort of accepted, um, about the twenty eight, twenty eleven, twenty two, I think they were not, like, they didn't.
Yeah.
In part because there's a lot of. There are a lot, there are a lot of things up in air, up in the air is still about which, the property in the city of New York are at that, or, you know, I mean, there are so many. And we will need to get all of those things straightened up in the twenty three audit.
Yeah.
Now, the twenty three audits, it turns out, is further away, I know that initially, um, while we were talking about this, it was crazy at the end of last year, but she, um. Uh, left the city for the, the most part, um, we had been hoping that we would be on track by the fall of twenty four. With audit, you know, submitting the twenty three audit in, in September, um, at one, I believe, or when, um, that will not be happening. According to, to Kim, um, we are, as, as we were hoping to be on track by the fall of twenty five, to get the twenty four audit. She, she, um, said that she believes that, that they should have twenty one and twenty two succeeded by audit, and then we start up to be three. But there are, um, as we said, a number of different facets to twenty three, they're gonna act, plus each of what we've been, to what we've been. What we will have done for twenty twenty. Can, can you, can you elucidate on that a little bit? Um, there's some reporting required, um, related to leaving, correct, Kim? And, as well as capital asset, um, some G A B D gate was willing to need that didn't exist for some prior reporting years. Chris, are we doing the she on there, something?
Yeah. I am here, I'm sorry, it's, it is a little difficult to hear you guys. I think your question was about how we're going to get to the twenty twenty three audit and some of the changes that will be made, is that correct?
You listed off a number of items that we would, that we would need for the twenty three audit, that we won't be dealing with for the, through the twenty two audit.
Correct, so capital assets is going to be one of the, the big things that we'll want to make sure that, that the listing is, is a very good listing. Um, as well as your leases, because there's, has been changes in the G A B D with your leases, as well as. There's called Speta, the, your subscription based I T agreements, so, um, those things. As well as we'll need to make sure that, you know, everything else is in line, your debt and all of the assets that you have on your books. We are, we're currently working on the twenty twenty one audit, and. Um, I'm sure we'll have questions to provide to the finance office, and then as we get through that, and then we anticipate working on the twenty twenty two audit. Probably late fall, early winter. And then we'll just keep going as the information's provided to us.
Yes, so what my understanding had been, when Tracy departed, when Tracy departed last winter, then she had provided. At least about majority of the information for all three audits, is that correct, Kim?
Um, we, the information has been uploaded by the finance department, and I believe there is, has been a significant amount. That has been done previously by Tracy, and I know that she had left a list for the finance department of a few things to clean up. For each of the audits.
And those are happening, timing?
Correct.
Um, good, uh, so the. The salary employees, I, or the new items that were on a different part of the finance session Tuesday. Um, related to our, our net financial position, which is always the terrifying page, um, in the audit every year. Um, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, Kim, is around the negative one hundred and thirty million, correct?
Correct, that is correct. Fortunately, that is the scary one, you're correct.
Um, that's always the page you look to and you go, wait, what the, um, but, uh, but anyway, the net financial position, um. Of course, is largely influenced by that huge thing that, that it, it seems like at least the majority of. Didn't tell, didn't tell the, have any, or had the other post employment benefits, that all of that are funded on a pay as you go basis. Um, that is a negative in the city's balance book of a hundred and forty two dollars. Um, Kim, the question that I didn't ask on Tuesday, I'm curious about, what, what are the advantages? Of funding the other post employment benefits, not on a pay as you go?
You, if you fund it on, not as your pay as you go, you can, you know, you're funding it over time and it'll reduce that liability.
So what are, so what is it costing us on a pay as you go basis right now, what would the funding, what would. The recommended funding stream be if we wanted to fund it?
I don't, yeah, I don't have that information in front of me, but that would, that would probably, you could get that number from your finance department. Um, you may be able to get it from your actuary report as well.
Okay, um, so that was, um, but, uh, yeah, I, I guess, I'm just, uh, I. I know that it is a number that we're supposed to fund in much of the thing we have our pension, but it's not one that we're currently required to fund. Is there any legislation coming down, if I mean, that would change that anytime soon?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. Um, and then, uh, obviously, our net financial position also changed slightly in twenty twenty because we absorbed the deficit. Um, so in addition. Uh, the good news is that we actually do appear a little bit slightly to the good, just in terms of our time, a little time budget spending. Um, instead of, we, we always, most years, we all are on the deficit spending budget, and of course, we don't actually engage in that spending. And I think that we put three hundred thousand dollars to the good in twenty twenty. Um, and although of course, that carry on for the, so the net financial for sure. Um, moving into the twenty five budget year will be the year that means it could be one of the. Um, uh, but we've been operating a little bit, kind of wanting to line, because budgeting for a lot, so I can catch up. All that to go, I fear financially for sure, I think. Um, and I'm trying to think of another, um. Kim, any other points that you would make? We know that we scoped out R V T, all the C D B G, looked, uh, good, I think you. Anything else that you'd like to bring to our attention about the rest?
No, I think you pretty much covered it all, thank you.
And, uh, that would be with the finance department, and if anybody here remembers something, I try.
Any, um, comments or questions from the members? If these are awesome.
Yeah, tomorrow or in twenty twenty five, um. It seems we have a path forward, so we can stay on it, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think the challenge is that it's all a little hard to know what opportunity we might be missing for something, if you, you know.
Two questions? Here you can see none, then Mrs. Frank, one item nine.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Ms. Meon.
Yeah.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yogan.
Yes, we, yes, five zero, we will jump up to item eight.
Resolution authorizing execution of agreement between City Williamsport and Campbell Durant P C for labor and employment legal services.
Service, the second. Second, so move. Second, Mayor Slaughter.
It's good evening, one again, President Gilger, members of House Administration, this is a resolution. Uh, authorize execution agreement between the city and Campbell Durant, uh, for our labor and employment legal services. This came up during the budget sessions, where we talked about this year being, um, union negotiations, um, in twenty four. And so we're at that point now, and, uh, you know, Council, I wanted to hire, no, not that with a lawyer negotiator, negotiator, which the administration agrees with. Um, and so that's what this is, we, uh, I think Councilman Gilger asked me to speak with PML, which I did. Um, and they recommend the Campbell Durant, who is very reputable, uh, labor, uh, law. And so, uh, we do a lot of labor negotiations, they can also handle some of the product stuff, stuff as well, I checked with them on that, and if they can handle that as well, um, if we need them to. So, uh, that's the resolution point, and this was, uh.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter, of the city of the finals.
Yes, I think the only major question on this identity that you would need and related to, um, we, we set aside four year fifty thousand in your budget. Okay, and we said that that were a four year fifty thousand in this year's budget. And, uh, and Campbell Durant, according to Mayor Slaughter, thought that. We, they, they were being able to work with it.
I didn't email it to you.
They knew what the budget was, and they thought that that was the issue now. And by the course, I mean, it's always possible, we had that sort of sign of the negotiation, but in a, you know, in a relatively complex. Um, and I think that, and, and as the mayor says, we have worked with them past.
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, we, we talked about this in budget last year, about our, the council's interest and desire to have this, just to, you know, continue the good progress, I think we made. Uh, in the last couple of cycles, and, uh, you know, we, we added that money to the budget, appreciate the administration taking the bull by the horns and really sniffing this out. Doing the heavy lifting this year, um, getting them on board, um, excited, we're excited to see, um, the difference in this relationship, absolutely. Any comments or questions on the item? Here you see none, then Mrs. Frank, one item nine.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Ms. Mealy.
Yep.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion pass five zero, clarify this item eight, not item nine, thank you, Vince, by the way. Uh, we'll move to item ten, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution authorizing and commemorative understanding between the City of Williamsport and Midland Waves twenty.
Resolution the second.
Second.
Second, Mayor Slaughter.
Yes, good evening, one final time, uh, for the members of the council administration. Um, this is the MOU, which we, that we do each year, between the city and Waves, uh, this one team. The only, uh, difference between last year's and this year's is that last year, if you remember, council waived, uh, the donation that they generally make to us since it was their first year back. We go out of places the previous couple of years while we obviously fix the pool. So this year, that is familiar, they will be making, uh, their donation again to the city, uh, for each kid that joins this one team. Uh, a piece of that comes to us. So, other than that, that's the standard MOU that we do with them each year.
Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. This is not going to be any news every year, but are there any comments or questions from our members here? Yes.
I can tell there, your team will be growing at this point, because I know because of the situation that I'm in, it was difficult to maintain your team.
Yeah, I can tell you it's large, because my daughter is on, on this one team.
I agree with that.
So there's a lot of kids, they actually came from there, from there tonight to here, um, and I don't know the exact number, but there were a lot of kids out there and a lot of new faces, my daughter did it last year. Um, and that's also new phases this year that I did not do last year. So, um, it is exciting, it's grown, it's not just Williamsport. Now, we do get some kids that, you know, family relatives would have, they want to be on the, until they come and do that. Yeah, yeah, I mean, yeah, they should, uh, and I think it's like a good building.
Thank you, Mrs. Katz. Any other comments or questions? Here you see none, Mrs. Frank, item ten.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four zero, thank you, Mayor Slaughter. We'll jump to item six, Mrs. Frank.
Resolution awarding construction services for twenty twenty four streets paving project to land, oh, not make.
Is there a motion? Second.
Second.
Second, Mr. Scott, thank you for your patience. Good evening, sir.
Good evening, Council President Gilger, this is Council, Mayor Slaughter. I have a resolution to present consideration for the, this year's twenty twenty four street paving project. Uh, the parent load bidder was a hallbaker, seventy thousand, four hundred ninety one dollars and fifty cents. Two other bids. Uh, Big Rock paving was, uh, second lowest, one hundred eighty eight thousand, eight hundred fifty five dollars. And HRI was third lowest, third highest, two eight, two hundred eighteen thousand, one hundred twenty three dollars and twenty cents. Found, uh, paving six streets, uh, tailor place, Hollywood Circle, First Avenue. Belmont Drive, Wayne Avenue, East Third Street. Um, we reviewed the low bid documents, uh, everything appeared to be in order, they included their bid on anti collusion form, workers compensation form, and public works verification forms. Uh, just an FYI, Hallbaker did our paving project last year, and the, the job.
So, of the works.
Yeah, well, and I think it's just kind of.
Um, any comments or questions from other members? Mr. Allison.
Yeah, not particularly for this project, for these, uh, paving projects, but, um, it was about, um, I believe, under sixteen miles of street. In the city, um. Do we have, um, a list of, or do we take an evaluation? Citywide, where we're at. What we need, what?
Probably just.
Started here on.
Yeah, we're Scott, I work, and, and, uh. We kind of got it up here, yeah, I get it on paper, and start to evaluate rate streets for the plan, give a paving project, you know, system, plan out for five years.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Thank you. Any other comments or questions? All right, here you see none, then Mrs. Frank, the motion for item six.
Mr. Allison.
Yes.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yes.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion pass, please, thank you, Bill, thank you. Uh, we'll jump to item five, Mrs. Frank.
Ordinance transfer, ordinance number twelve in final reading.
Is there a motion in a second?
Second.
Motion in the second, uh, Kevin's not here, are you, okay, I'm just sad. I don't know that there's much really to add, and this week, yeah.
This is just the ordinance, uh, and final reading, transfer of this number twelve, uh, just, you know, nothing changed with the first reading to now.
Yeah. Um, thank you, Mayor. Any comments or questions that you're reading? Here you see none, Mrs. Frank, one item five, please.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yeah.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four zero, and you got this in the side of item twelve. Yes. Item twelve, acceptable filing, finance committee meeting minutes from December fifth, two thousand twenty three, economic revitalization minutes from October twenty fifth. Two thousand twenty three, is there a motion in a second? So move.
Second.
Motion in a second, any comments, questions from members? Here you see none, Mrs. Frank, item twelve.
Mr. Allison.
Yeah.
Mr. Pelosi.
Yes.
Mrs. Katz.
Yep.
Mr. Yoder.
Yes, motion passes four zero. Item thirteen, announcements, our next regularly scheduled city council meeting will be on Thursday, July eleventh, seven PM, here at train track two. Upcoming meetings, Wednesday, June twenty sixth, ten AM, is invited property, eleven thirty AM, redevelopment authority. Um, Monday, July first, twelve PM, is planning commission, city hall will be closed on Thursday, July fourth. Um, for Independence Day, um, Tuesday, July ninth, eleven thirty AM, is Public Safety Committee, one PM Finance Committee, two, three PM Public Works Committee. Wednesday, July tenth, nine o'clock in the morning is second level revitalization, and next Thursday, July eleventh, is our next city council meeting. Um, open for comments from members of city council. Mr. Pelosi.
Um, seeing as how we won't be in state, and I have our next meeting until after the fourth, um, I would just like to, uh. Extend a word of caution to everybody out there that would be celebrating fireworks or whatever they may do. Hopefully, everybody's able to celebrate responsibly and safely, and without making our city sound like a war zone. Uh, it gets a little loud, uh, late at night. I just hope everybody stays safe.
Yeah, um, for, for anybody that needs it, um, the Bureau of Police put out a announcement a couple of days ago on Crime Watch outlining, you know, the, the ordinance. Um, so if anybody needs that for reference, um, that's out there, it's super helpful. Um, the gist of it is, uh, we say this every year, people still do it. Fireworks are illegal in the city, um, there's pretty much, there's not really anywhere that they can legally be set off, even with spacing and everything like that. People always do it, um, if people truly have an issue with it, they need to contact the authorities. Um, that's always the challenge in enforcing that. Um, I would echo Mr. Police's comments, um, outside of the, the noise nuisance. Um, that it does create, and I, I have a newfound respect for that with the two year old, um, very much, um, the fire hazard. It is a, we have a very old house in stock, um, you know, anything about the heat right now, um, you know, the, the potential dryness that time of year, it is a very big fire hazard. So please, 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 um, be careful, follow the ordinance. Thank you, snakes and bargains, yes. Um, thank you, Mr. Police. You're welcome. Any other comments from members? Any comments from members of the administration? Yes, please.
Uh, just reminded that this weekend is on May Day, Brandon Park, um, and then Saturday is Children's Union Report and, uh, Charlotte.
Awesome. Thank you, Mayor Slaughter. Any other comments from the administration? Uh, comments from the public, um, I think there's a group that has, uh, comments, um, so, uh, please come up, uh, state your name and address for the record. I, I know, um, there's a couple of you that have comments kind of compiled, so, um, if my fellow members are okay with it, I'd like to extend an additional three minutes to let them get through them, please. Um, so, I'll, I'll, I'll have a time for here for six minutes, and like I said, you know, I kind of like that you all, so if you have one, just sort of get early, I'll. Try to. Uh, welcome, I guess, naming, uh, address for the record, and if I have six minutes, thank you for.
Good evening, uh, President Gilger, council members, thanks for having us and opening up the floors that we can speak. Uh, my name is Robin Jackie Tay, I live at four four one Woodland Avenue, in East End, Williamsport. And I'm here with a, a variety of my neighbors in support of, uh, what we feel is a very concerning situation. Uh, we come to you for guidance and just assistance to help us understand what our rights are as homeowners and residents of the city. So, the subject of concern is the property located at four forty Woodland Avenue. Um, this is owned by a local physician, and he is currently not occupying that residence, but he is, um, allowing it to be occupied by an operating business agency known as Community Options. And per the LIGO dot org zoning map, Woodland Ave is zoned as an R two residential district, which is considered primarily a one family attached dwelling district. So, uh, you know, what our question is here is how is this business agency, Community Options, permitted to operate within this residential dwelling, um, district? So, for, for a business to operate in an R two dwelling, it's our understanding that a variance must be obtained. And it's also our understanding for this variance to be approved, that a representative from that address or agency would need to submit the request of use of the property. Attend the zoning hearing and obtain approval from the members of the zoning board to operate a business within a residential area. Um, lastly, it's also our understanding that prior to the zoning board hearing, a letter from City of Williamsport would be sent out to all residents on Woodland Avenue or within close proximity of the. Uh, property at four forty Woodland Avenue, and the intent of that letter would be to inform the neighborhood that a business agency would be occupying the property. And that we would be encouraged to attend the hearing and express our thoughts or our support, concerns, et cetera, about these operations. Um, so we would like to bring to your attention that none of us here tonight, nor any of the ninety people who signed our petition in support of a safer community. Um, none of us were made aware that that's what this residence was going to be functioning as. Um, so. We, uh, we attempted to find some answers to some of our questions prior to this meeting. Back on, uh, June eleventh, um, a phone call was made to the zoning officer, Gary Nar. And the contents of that conversation were very similar to that, you know, this is our understanding, um, none of us were made aware, is, is, is this the appropriate procedure? Do we maybe not understand? Um, so he, uh, in addition, there was a second phone call made to Mr. Nar. And up to this point, we have not heard any information back from him. Um, and I do believe several folks have contacted Mayor Slaughter in regards to the situation as well. So, uh, it's definitely, um, something that we would like to bring awareness to. Uh, the house is clearly a place of business with twenty four hour day staff members, they work various shifts, coming and going at all hours. Uh, they tend to individuals who are their clients, and those clients pay for their services. So I will reiterate that at no time was there a variance procedure of any type, um, for this sort of business in a residential area. And as residents and homeowners, we were never afforded the opportunity to speak to the nonconforming use of that property. So, particularly one that has proven to be extremely disruptive. Uh, the clients have violent tendencies, and most recently, um, threw a piece of furniture right out the front door. Uh, broke the entire front door right off of the house. Um, they have escaped multiple times, they've caused extreme commotion by pounding on neighbors' doors, they've exhibited, exhibited public nudity. They screamed obscenity throughout the community, um, they threatened to harm themselves and others. Uh, they've, and, and allegedly or admittedly have raped a child. So, in addition to these numerous examples of troubling behaviors, the landscaping company, DC Landscaping, tends to the property. They store multiple landscaping and snow removal materials on site and inside a shed. They are at the property several times a week disrupting the neighborhood with their foot traffic. They're driving landscaping trucks that have these extended trailers, they're parking the wrong direction on the street. Uh, there's a maintenance crew that comes to the property several times a month to do repair work when clients have broken or destroyed parts of the house. So, this formerly peaceful street has become a common scene to a variety of emergency responders, also such as police, fire, and ambulances. Uh, we've been told by the staff of Community Options that this is their only choice when a resident escapes or becomes violent, is to call nine one one and make for assistance from first responders. So, at all hours of the day and night, emergency vehicles arrive in full gear with emergency lights and spotlights illuminating in every single direction. Um, their vehicles preventing residents from coming or going from their homes, they block the passage through the street. I attempted to obtain the log of the multitude of nine one one calls made to the address to support this statement. However, I was told by the Public Safety Office, as well as the Land Department of Police, that this information is not public record and can only be released to a landlord. Um, as an interesting side note, last Thursday, nine one one was summoned by the staff of Community Options to my own address at four four one Woodland Avenue. No one was home at the time, and, uh, the first responders were circling the house, going to all the doors, and probably, I would imagine, getting ready to bust into my house, because nobody was there. Fortunately, they were stopped by one of the associates across the street, indicating that it was actually their client who needed the medical attention. So, that may have obviously ended badly at my expense. So, this section of the city has a variety of residents, including many families with minor children, and you can see all the folks here, they're in the ages, and, um. A lot of minor children living in the, in the vicinity. Uh, we have seen evidence in the past that the staff do not appear, appear to be well trained, they're not allowed to physically restrain the individuals. Many of us have expressed increasing anxiety to each other from the past experiences with these clients. And truly fear of the next moment that one of their clients may explode out of the door and potentially commit a heinous act in our neighborhood. Um, it's the responsibility that we feel of city officials to ensure that residents are able to safely and securely enjoy living in this residential zone section of the community. So, I give you all of this as evidence of how a business, this business is more than simply a nuisance, but it's truly amending our neighborhood and causing chaos. Our neighborhood and causing chaos and actual fear of the clientele. So, um, thank you.
Thank you for coming and for, for sharing that with, with us. We, we appreciate it.
What do you do with that?
If you want to drop a copy of that off with, um, Janice right here, our city clerk, and, uh, and, and Mayor Slaughter. Um, we'll, we'll take that as well. Um, if you have additions to that down the road, um, Janice's office. Is on the first floor of this building, ready to come in the entrance, uh, third street. She's right there on the left. Thank you very much. Um, are there any other comments from the public? Comments. But, um, I will take a motion in a second for adjournment.
Certainly.
Second, all in favor?
I.
We adjourned. Thank you all. Have a safe, happy Fourth of July, and see you in a couple weeks.